Evening and welcome to tonight's Town of Dayton Board of Health regular meeting. We're currently at Old Town Hall, upper level meeting room 111 Somerset Ave. It's Thursday, March 9, 2023. The time is 4:33. This is a Zoom meeting. This is a public meeting being recorded for cable broadcast and internet posting on www.dighton-mats.gov and YouTube. At this time, can I take a role?
Paul, could you go here?
Patrick from government here.
Nicole Mello, and we do have somebody on Zoom. Would you like to identify yourself?
Oh yeah, Mike Muller, the town administrator.
And can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Practice.
Yes. Start with new business. A, review discuss act fiscal year 2024 budget. So we're reviewing the budget. We had a line item on 510 that we had still needed to discuss further. It was the salary supervisor. We had it to be determined. We have just some discussion on that. While we reconstruct the health department with the operations manager, which we're looking at the title for, we would be looking to fund that for equivalent of up to 10 hours with the successful candidate as part of exempt salary estimated at $40 an hour. Mike is here tonight to add to anything to this. Do you have anything to add to this, Mike? You're on mute.
Yes. Okay, anyone hear me now?
Yes.
So 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 yeah, like Jim Mello, what what you just mentioned based on our discussion would be so the proposal would be a structured health department with an operations manager funded at the equivalent of up to 10 hours a week or negotiated with a successful candidate as part of an exempt salary that would be roughly roughly s- so roughly estimated at $40 an hour and just I can just that math when you do it out at 10 hours a week times $40 an hour times 50 two weeks a year would cost approximately $20,800. Based on that structure, Ian is part of the planning for the FY24 budget process. So we can plan for that. And plan for this based on the board's based on the board's discussion and approval, we can envision posting for the position once we have town meeting approval for the funding with a range from between $16,640 to the high to the such to the higher end of that range, as I just mentioned, to $20,800 a year or a relative negotiated salary in this position will be posted. And as you mentioned, and as the board in the public already knows, one of the things that the already proposed Board of Health and Health Department budget already includes is the restructuring to shift more of the current inspections to our third-party inspector or contractor. And at this point, based on that, it could be anticipated that this could decrease the need for field inspections that have traditionally been performed by the health agent. So as a result, the proposed restructuring could include could include a reduction of 10, approximately 10 hours in the health agent position. And this would prompt the need for oh, you know, really something we've been working on as part of this restructuring for the better part of last year. Oh, you know, but this would really finally give us the clarity we need. To really move forward with a revised job description. Oh, you know, for the health agent based on this restructuring plan that we're really looking to really finalize after the last year. And so with that, the health agent would have the ability and anyone would have the ability who is interested to apply for the operations manager position. But specifically for the the 25 eight, the 25 hours for the health agent. Oh, you know, based on, oh, you know, the priority in the work. Oh, you know, that the that the health agent does for stormwater, we can envision all those 24, all those 25 hours support for stormwater agent responsibilities. I could continue between between eight and 10 hours a week, which would be overseen by the which would be overseen by the Board of Health. Oh, you know, like now as a chair mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. So where we are, oh, you know, with these restructuring discussions that have been ongoing for the last year. Oh, you know, add, but also as important, oh, you know, that we create a vision and a plan for the fiscal year 24 budget. So yeah, this is really the next step to really crafting this plan. Oh, you know, like you really make so like you're really working to make sure that the plan is actually reflected as the plan of the budget. So we, so the board health and the selectmen. Oh, you know, like you're able to really culminate this process and be able to plan forward and move the department forward. Oh, you know, like actually accordingly. So like that is really the idea. Oh, you know, but I wanted to propose that, oh, you know, to the border house. So we might so as I mentioned, really bring this whole process, this restructuring process really to a head and a combination.
Thank you, Mike. Does anyone have any discussion?
You go first.
So recently, I've done a little bit more reading than I have in the past of past notes and past requests and past everything towards the board. I 100% agree that there needs to be some kind of operations manager, some kind of day-to-day operations overview of what the Board of Health does. In the past couple of months, and I've only been on the board for a couple of months, but requests from the Board of Selectmen for restructuring efforts for the Board of Health have been ongoing for, from what I can understand, quite some time. I know there's been a lot of changes in the board personnel-wise, a lot of changes in the department. But it's, it's a request from the board, from the Board of Selectmen that has basically gone unanswered. The only thing we can really say that we've restructured period or anything has been giving away the transfer station to the highway department. And I understand a little of this is going into section B as well, but it kind of groups both of them together. I've, as a Board of Health member, I've sent emails to the Board of Health itself with concerns of residents not getting plans done on time, residents requesting work that hasn't been even suggested to. And I haven't had the greatest comments when I get replies in these emails. They haven't been the greatest comments. Somebody coming from private industry, it's, it's made me very, very angry reviewing some things. I just don't like when you look at the fact that we're ignoring our, our residents. And those are the people that we report to. We're ignoring the Board of Selectmen's requests for restructuring efforts, not ignoring, probably a bad word for it, but requests for restructuring efforts have gone unanswered in a year. You know, we talk about third-party discussions on discussions on third-party personnel coming in to do inspections. That was discussed and approved in April 2022, that, that the health agent could use a third party. And we spent as a board half an hour discussing it a month ago. So why are we still hashing out things that were approved by a board a year ago? It just, it hinders our efforts. My view is the fact that a board of health that meets once a month is not, is not a supervisory position for a board that quite frankly, when you look at and to Jim's point, actually, in notes I read a couple of months ago, with a market that changes daily, with interest rates that change, with everything that changes, and we have residents in town that want to build a bigger house to have a bigger family, and those plans go unanswered for months. The volatile market that we're living in, we, we can't do that. Absolutely can't be done. A board of health cannot wait a month and then a month and then a month to, to discuss points. Downstairs, the office needs a manager to take care of accountability, to answer to the Board of Health as well as the Board of Selectmen and provide a path for restructuring and a path for the Board of Health to, to grow. If we were here every day, I think that we could handle it. I have no doubt that three of us could handle it. But I do 100% agree in the fact that this disposition needs to happen. And I think this is a huge step forward in the Board of Health restructuring and the Board of Health becoming a board of health. One note I read in the beginning, probably last April, May, was that there was a lawyer from the state that came in and met with the Board of Health and discussed it, and they knocked it right on the head. The Board of Health, we're, we're for the global, for the better part, we're politicians. We're not business managers, not day-to-day operations managers. We oversee this, and this is vital, like this, I 100% support this and think this, this is something that I believe the Board of Selectmen is looking for to, to kind of make our department stronger. Sorry, I kind of grouped both of them together.
They kind of, yeah, they go together.
Yeah, well, that's what I thought, that we really can't talk about the budget that much until we figure out how we get restructure.
Right.
That's going to determine our budget, and we've already done the preliminary budget. That's why I put in the email that I think.
Yeah, but we have to revisit it because there's still open lines.
Okay.
And that's what we're doing right now with the operation manager.
Yeah.
So that we can, when we actually go in front of income, that we have this filled out and that we have a plan.
Right. Well, we're going to need some more information before we can actually fill that out.
Right, but I think we have a good starting number.
Yeah, we have enough.
A number in that column. And I believe we do have the justification behind it to justify the zero budget kind of mentality behind it as to why we're looking for it and why we think the board needs it. But I think we at least have a number now to put in there.
Right.
Yeah, because we, we can't put it off. As you said, we're doing a disservice to the residents. We need to do better. And I think with this, we will do better.
Right.
From here, Mike, it's my understanding that we're looking to make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen to meet with them in a joint session.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute myself, but yes, we will look to schedule that. So like we will look to schedule that and I can really hopefully wrap this up as part still of the budget process, but especially as we go forward with income, we could all hopefully, based on the Board of House recommendation, have a unified plan that everyone has the ability to unify behind the depth behind.
Right, so it looks like we're looking for a motion for us to bring this to a joint meeting. It's March 22nd, we're looking at.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we will go on the high end of it just as a discussion point. So I, I make a motion and we add to that line item the value of $20,800 for a supervisory role in the Board of Health and meet with the Board of Selectmen in March 22nd to present it to them.
A second.
Any discussion?
Oh.
Can I get a vote?
Aye.
Two ayes, okay. And then just one other item. So we had discussed the health agent, and we want to bring that as well to the Board of Selectmen, I'm guessing.
Yes.
So I'm going to need a motion in regards to that.
We guys are.
We're looking to propose in restructuring, reducing to 10 hours. Not 10 hours, yep.
Reduce.
25 hour, so 20, yep, reduce of 10 to 25 hours. Yes.
To 25?
Yes. Due to the adding the third-party services.
Yes, okay.
I'll make a more, that's fine. So I make a motion to consider reducing the health agents' hours by 10 hours, increasing the third-party inspections to cover the costs and present it as well as to the board.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Vote?
Aye.
Aye.
And it passes. All right, so we did, we pretty much did do A and B in one. Do I need to do anything else? Can I just move on? I'm gonna. Okay, so we're going to move on. There's no further discussion, right? We're going to move on to C, review, discuss act 2022 annual town report. I had put that on there just because we had discussed it briefly when you first came on. You had showed interest. I know I had received another email that they were, they were looking for him and just to revisit where we are with that.
Yep, so I have an outline done. Actually, I kind of got sidelined by personal family matters as well as my digging into the Board of Health minutes and videos and everything. It's, it, there's a lot out there.
I think it probably helped though.
You know what, honestly, I 100% admit that it, it presented me with a lot of information that I was not aware of, which as a failure of my part to not review it before I went after the position, but it kind of, you know, I had to get up and walk away from my computer a couple of times, which I do with my regular job on a normal basis. However, we have a framework worked out. I reached out to Elizabeth the other day. She got me the numbers so I can make sure the numbers are in there properly. I was actually, today was going to email you because you had a presentation as the nurse, the town nurse of like COVID tests and blood pressure clinics. I think that's great information to add into there. So I'll shoot you an email so it's official. But if you have any numbers from that PowerPoint, I'd love to add them in there.
Yes.
But I do have an outline. I spoke to the town administrator today to kind of let him know where that, that whole report stands and what the timeline is, and I'm on board for it to be done in time.
Okay, thank you. Great.
I got one question.
Yeah.
I thought we was going to be, I thought A, we were talking about, and we kind of talked about restructuring, but that was, I thought, budget. I didn't know we're going to go right to C.
Oh, when I, I asked if we had kind of covered A and B together and nobody said anything. Do you want to go back to B?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe that we had discussed about stormwater personnel coming in, taking Todd, whatever feels like it. Last week I came in, he wasn't here. There was a person in the office. Elizabeth needed to see him. He went right into there. I had to tell him a few times to Elizabeth, need you. Jim had also mentioned it. Me and Jim went to town hall meeting with the of the town seal, came back and she was still in there talking to Todd. It was over, probably over an hour. I think that, as I mentioned before, they need to go to Elizabeth and find her to Todd's bill, not just walk in, walk by and say, I'm taking over. There's got to be some structure there.
I don't know though, if going, because Elizabeth doesn't have oversight over Todd like in the structure, so I don't know.
Well, she is the office manager.
She is.
So, and she's the person, I agree, that everybody come through the call. And she does a lot of schedule. And Todd dropped his reports. He'd give it to her to finish. So he's not her boss either.
No.
Right.
Nobody's anyone's boss. That's the problem.
Exactly. And we need to enforce that stormwater can't just come in and take Todd whenever they feel like it. There's got to be a chain of command, and the only chain of command that I can see at this point is to have Elizabeth scheduled. We don't have anybody else right now. So it's not making her his boss, it's just making her, asking her to stand with us.
So anyone else have any discussion on that?
No, I think this will play out in a bigger bigger area with our discussions on the 24 budget with the personnel to kind of oversee issues that are going on.
But I think you're looking for something in the intermediate.
Yes. What do we do in before we get there? Start acting now.
So how does the process work when like an engineer or something wants to have time with you, Todd? Do they just contact you directly?
Sometimes, sometimes they call us, sometimes just walking off the street.
When people walk off the street, they're muted by Elizabeth and then they could be directed to you.
But they don't, a lot of times they just walk right by. Ignore.
I'll approach usually when they walk in. Because I'm right there, so I'll approach them, but they know, they know Todd and they know who they're looking for, they go right to him. But if it's a new person.
Right. Is it Mike's concern is people are just coming in and take up time. It's on this, sorry. But engineer comes in, what, he's already dealt with an engineer, another engineer comes in. Somebody needs to tell them that they got to come back, obviously, and wait.
Oh, sorry, Jim.
I think I have a two-part comment, yes, sir. You're right.
I might need to get closer to the mic. Excuse me, Jim. I'm sorry.
Sure.
It's tough to do the minutes when the speech.
Oh, so I, why are you concerned about the minutes?
I'm not, but it's common practice to have people go to the podium when they're speaking.
I just wanted to like, you know, make a comment on the minutes.
We get better ratings when I stay in here anyway.
Yeah. Get more likes.
Yeah. So I think this will get flushed out when you implement the supervisory position because time management will be the responsible of the supervisor. But in the interim, there is a problem because this is going to take time to implement, especially if it's part of an FY24 budget. We, the earliest we would see any relief in the office from a management perspective would be July 1st. So I'm going to take a lesson from the town administrator. You cannot see the town administrator without going through his Leanne or Mrs. Brady. So I don't know if the Board of Health wanted in the interim to do something the same for the health department where the office manager would be responsible. I believe the office manager and health agent already share a schedule that's electronic. So we could very well put out an email that says anyone who wants to spend time with the health agent in the interim, it would have to go through the office manager and it could be put in the schedule. And then that schedule has to be followed. So that just might be an option that we can do for now. So, okay.
You want to make that motion?
Yeah, I can't do it as nicely. Said I can't make the motion as well as you did.
Just try.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, and we discussed it with Stormwater as well as, as there's just there's a time management issue with the department.
Right.
I'll make a motion that any, anyone in town, out of town, anyone that needs to speak with the health agent needs to make an appointment with the office manager.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Can I get a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. All right, we're going to go down to D, review, discuss act, the use of third-party consult for perk tests and septic plan reviews. Paul, was this you that added this?
What's that?
Do you have discussion on this?
No, he didn't. Patrick, didn't you add that?
I did, but we kind of touched upon that. The other one is, is I, I brought this up because of my research and the fact that it was this should be old business, but the fact that this was discussed in April of 2022. It's been on our new business for two or three months now. It just, it's been approved. I just wanted to make a point of that, that we need to start using it. It was approved last year. It should be utilized more often.
But at this point, it's on our FY24 budget. Are we able to utilize it now or do we, we have to reach?
So that, that's where I don't, and, and if Jim, you want to speak on, but that's, that was my comment, and this is why I wanted it discussed is because of the fact that I found that it was discussed, approved in April of 2022. And it was discussed in January of '23 and was voted on as part of our budget process for '24, if I'm correct. And, and the reason I wanted this brought up and, and I kind of talked, touched upon it in the restructuring efforts is it, it shouldn't be something that we're talking about for fiscal '24. It should be something that should be utilized now unless, and there could have been approval things that I'm, I'm not aware of, and do you have a comment on that, Jim?
I do. So this is, we're making much progress tonight. So I commend all of you for putting the effort in. This raises a couple of questions and some of it's accounting. You've already made the motions. We know that in the past to have the third-party reviews take place. However, we don't have anything in the budget aside from professional technical that will cover that. So what I don't know, and maybe Administrator Muller can weigh in, is if the accountant will let us deficit spend that line and then we'll have to do a transfer before the end of the fiscal year to cover any costs that occurred. That said, we also may want to consider FY24 bolstering that line be by the, through the reduction of the health agent's hours, you're now going to need to utilize that service more. Which is why I say we have some direction finally tonight. So I think we may have to look at that line and bolster that line for the FY24 budget in order to cover those, those costs. All that said, if you get a supervisor who understands municipal finance and knows that we're a service-oriented department, you can in turn go to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health first, the Board of Selectmen with some beach restructuring that will enable the local receipts to bolster the increases in those lines. And, and that's exactly how I run my department.
So if that, if that item, I mean, technically that line item should be a wash, correct? They, we put up money for it. It's reimbursed through fees, so it, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be a drain on the town. It should be.
Exactly. The objective when you have a user-based system is to have the taxpayer or the client or the contractor who needs the service of the department pay for that service.
Right, right.
And you don't pay for someone's septic system installation or oversight when you're not putting the septic system. So that's exactly how you do that in a responsible manner. So, and I know you have a comment, but Administrator Muller, can we deficit spend the special technical line? And then do a transfer?
The I like, I think it would be a challenge to do that based on the open-endedness of that gym right now. Oh, you know, my best scent would be to recommend so really planning in very carefully structuring those inspections between now and the fiscal year. As you meant, so based on the structure that we have now for the remainder of the, of the four short months for the rest of FY23, as you mentioned, we know we have the board has actually, the Board of Health has has actually proposed funding in the amount of, I believe, $9,000 for inspections in FY24. What I would, I mean, this is just my thought. I mean, I am not the so the end-all, be-all here. I'm Jim, like you're way more like philosophical than I am sometimes, but what I recommend at this point is actually leaving the $9,000 there. So and then based on the first few months, so of the fiscal year, based on with an operations manager so together, so we can actually look at the revenues. Oh, you know, look at the trends and then based on all that, have an analysis that if we're projecting that those third-party inspections are going to be more, then armed with more concrete information. So we can bring that to special town meeting.
Okay, so if I'm following you correctly from a budgetary perspective, are you saying that we should change that line to the inspectors and consultants for the, for the, for the plan reviews?
Um. Oh, I mean, I, um, I I would recommend definitely inspectors. So and just going back To the, so the general proposed structure that I mentioned. Uh, you know, I think as part of that and why. Uh, even though we have the most. The clear direction we've had in a long while. At this point, but, oh, you know, we so still need to sort out. Um. Or the board will need to sort out what actually gets third partyed out. What is actually handled in-house? And how the revenues that are collected to do those services are actually represented, um. I like of, of the health agents twenty five hours, I mean, I mentioned, this is just my idea, and obviously the board has, has to really discuss it. Um. And agree with it as well, but of those twenty five hours, some of those hours. Oh, you, oh, oh, you know, maybe about a quarter or so would be devoted. So it could be devoted to a storm water. So, so but the other three quarters hours, they could. Oh, you know, conceivably also still can. I like involved uh, some portion of either inspections or plan reviews and I. And I think until that is better defined. Uh, like it's. Uh, it's gonna be a little challenging to really quantify that number, but that's just my. That, that's just my take on it instead, yeah.
So. I actually would encourage the board to allow some of those decisions to be made by whomever takes the operations position. Because that person will be able to understand and fully vet what's needed on a day to day basis. However, that doesn't answer the question of the here and now. So that we don't have been a situation. Where, where we have people who are not getting the services they require, so. How? Are we going to address that? Although it is only four short months away, it's four months away.
Well, it's a third of a year. And.
So.
But we're also coming into the season, you know, the winter's over, there's going to be a lot more. So I don't think that we can wait four months to. Keep having people keep waiting, we keep, we've been getting complaints, people waiting a long time. And when you figure out a way that we can implement. Third party services.
We, we already have the vote, we need to model.
Yeah, so, so like, I guess, um, um, let me just ask this follow up question, is there any way? That uh, we. Together with the board would be able to project. So and quantify. How, how much that be so rather? Just really deficit spending, which isn't to. Our good practice at all. Uh, so if we can quantify it. Um, we can put a reserve. So we can put a reserve fund transfer together. Then. On the flip side. Oh, you know, I would encourage us in short order to look at the revenues. Uh, or to look at the fee structure. Oh, you know, that is gonna help to offset that reserve fund transfer, and if that, so, so, so is it up to par? Oh, you know, to really back that up. Oh, you know, that really could be something we look at as well, but in the meantime, so if we can quantify. I like a four month trend of what that would cost, I actually. Rather than just, oh, you know, simply deficit spend, we put a plan together. Oh, you know, and we do go to a, like it was a fun transfer.
That sounds like that's a possibility, I mean, we found out how many we do in a year, we can, Mr. Hall?
Question I have in regards to, since you bring a third party consultant. And I would assume that. The party who is requesting. The testing is paying for this, right?
Yeah, but unlike a fifty three G, if that's where you're going, um, that. I. I could be wrong, and I'm willing to discuss it, but um. With a fifty three G. A fifty three G is created for an individual. Who needs the third party services, in this case, it's town one. If we send the plans out for review, it's everybody in the town who needs that service, I don't think we get seven to fifty three G. For that type of the plan review, is that accurate, Michael?
That's how I understand it, Jim.
Okay, okay. So instead, what you do is you fund the line in the operational budget to cover whatever those costs are for the consultant. And then you make sure that your user fees for local receipts are. Coming up with that money.
Right.
So that when you go to town meeting, the taxpayers know that although you're appropriating this in the operating budget. We're getting this back to local receipts, so that's gonna be.
So there was funded line item, technically, without.
It doesn't affect the tax base.
Right.
To answer your question, we have a wonderful office manager who loves to work uh, in the office, she could look at last year's permits that we issued. From March through June thirtieth. And we can come up with a number that is, is real because it's, it's uh, season oriented. And then we can figure out what that would cost.
But will that allow us to implement it immediately?
Yeah, we just have to have a further discussion with Town Administrator and um, Town Accountant. To see what we need to do with the shuffling of money to make sure we have money to pay some.
Cause that's basically always a shop.
Aside.
It's just a shovel of money, cause the money goes.
But then we have to, oh. It's all, yeah, and then just one other thing that we can do concurrently to all this, we can put those, so we can put those on call services out to bed as well.
Okay, can we discuss this on uh, March twenty second?
Is that something that we can discuss on March twenty second, Mike?
See, we'll already be having a joint meeting.
Yes, I, yeah, like, I'm just, um. Uh, yes, we can look to, I'm just thinking of my. And our capacity um, of everything in the next, uh, in the next two weeks. Um, yes, we can try, and, but if we can't, it'll be very shortly thereafter.
Alright.
Now, when are we gonna start with the twenty five hours?
That would be. Um, that would be in the next fiscal period in July.
I just asked one question for you, would that be enough time by the twenty second, Elizabeth, for you to look through those permits? Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, Elizabeth. Um, alright, do we need a motion for this or anything? We good?
We need a motion.
Um. I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Alright, we're gonna move on to E, review discuss act, proposed regulations on animal containment. Sorry, Stacey.
So the agricultural commission has been tasked, and this is something we've discussed for a while. Um. Regulations, not bylaws, regulations on large animals. We have a leash law, cats are cats, but we don't have anything on. Large animals, and what sort of puts it, puts us in a hard position, the state doesn't have any specific guidelines either, they have recommendations, we're not specific guidelines. So when somebody decides on Bailey Street, they're gonna keep a cow. They decide, well, I have this, this is how much land I have, but they don't realize that's, they need X amount of grazing and that kind of stuff, so we've been working on regulations, but we. Put them to the table sooner, sooner than the other ones, because we've had, having problems with chickens in other people's yards. So what we're suggest, suggestion, right, as a regulation recommended in poultry, poultry can be turkey, it can be um. Geese, anything like that, or encoverment, all that kind of stuff. That shall, it shall be housed in a proper sized coop, which consists of at least two square feet per poultry. And, and a minimum eight to twelve inches of roosting space per bird. Coop shall be secured from predators, feeding and clean water should be readily available to ensure proper nutrition and health. Range poultry are required to stay in the boundaries of the resident's property. How they do that, that's up to them. But, there's no reason that. Somebody that lives next door to two people that have chickens at free range that hop the fence, they have to put up with that. So this is our recommendation as a regulation, I recommend, I recommend. Asians, you have to be Board of Health regulations.
What's the definition of regulation in Bible?
Regulation, you, you discuss it, you decide what you're gonna do, if you want, if you want. We need it three times, and it's good. Bylaw has to go in front of town meeting.
I personally don't think that we have authority, as she said, the state hasn't even really. Determined what's proper, what's not.
Yeah, but we need something.
We need something, one, and. Says you have to have complete control over animals, it doesn't specifically say dogs and cats. Our bylaw now says dogs. It used to say just animals, but now it says just dogs. So, we sort of took that whole. Thing away, and when people call and complain, I have nothing to stand on, because we have nothing. I can go out there and tell them, you have to keep your chickens in your yard, and I walk out of the yard and go, yeah, what are you gonna do about it?
Oh, is this regulation, is this something that's a similarly worded regulation in other towns, like?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm guessing if you took the right to farm by law.
Yes, yes, cause we haven't, we haven't um, told them they can't have chickens or anything like that, what we told them is, there's, there's rules, I mean. I understand free ranging because everybody does it, but. It's in my yard, but people do, so.
Mr. Holmes?
The only question I have. Regulations are good, what is the penalty for?
There is, there is, we suggest, we recommended first offense written, warning, second offense, twenty five dollars, third offense. Fifty dollars, fourth offense, and anything after is a hundred.
And who will be the enforcementist?
That would be me.
Thank you. Through the board?
Through the board.
I'm assuming this is non criminal.
Yes, non criminal.
Keep your chickens in your.
I'm sorry, I have to be professional.
Think that this is important, I mean, we've had calls, I mean, I know I wouldn't want um, chickens in my yard, just if they're.
Oh, I, I, I just don't overstep our boundaries.
I, it, it doesn't sound like we're overstepping our boundaries.
No, we need, as a town, to make stricter law, stricter.
Regulations.
State.
Right.
So if the state has nothing. We can come up with something and say, this is what we.
Oh, you're, you're right.
As long as we're not violating any right to farm, and as long as it's, it's common with other towns, I don't see any wrong with it.
Was made for those farms that make more than. I want to say it's five thousand dollars a year, and they claim it on their taxes. That's what that bylaw is supposed to encompass and supposed to protect. It's not supposed to protect those. Backyard farmers, even though people think it's supposed to, it's not supposed to. So that's something else we're working on is a pamphlet to explain what right to farm is, we really don't have very many farm farms in town, but we have a few.
Right, and the people that have chickens that are not a farm, that's just hard.
Right. Right.
So they are allowed to have their hobbies.
They are, but you can't. You have to be a neighbor, and that's what I tell people when I go out, and the first thing, the first complaint, I always go out and say, listen. The chickens are over in their yards. It's pooping on your neighbor's deck, they don't like that. Be a neighbor. Be a kind neighbor.
I agree.
And then I walk away. If I go back out again, I'm not as nice. But there's no fine structure, with this, we have a fine structure, so I can be different than just going back up, out here again. You know, we need to have something that somebody can enforce, because. I look like, I look stupid going out there and saying, you can't, your chickens are over in somebody's yard. Yes, I can make the neighbor put their bird feeders away and all that kind of stuff. But they have the right to do that also. So.
So can I just question on your? Recommended fee structure?
Yes.
Um, I, I've, I'm, I one hundred percent understand the. My neighbor this, my neighbor that, you know, I worked in the fire service for sixteen years, so we got called for those all the time. Would it be worth kind of throwing into that before that first offense is like not a written warning, but like. Something that you've gone out there, like a verbal discussion, so that way you can't have somebody say, well, last week I saw her go out and just talk to them and then give her a verbal warning, is that kind of an area to look at or?
Why we thought a written warning first was because. I'll pay the trail, because I don't want to go out there and somebody say to me, you've never been out here, and how do I prove I've been out there, well, I. I wear a broadest band, but. I mean, they can say it, well, you've never been out here.
Well, I would include a verbal warn, I mean, even in my job, a verbal warning is still written.
Right.
Like a verbal, like guys in the document, those, I would.
It would be, what I said would be on the morning, so they know that this is not, you know, this is not what's supposed to be happening.
And if you're enforcing it, then whatever works for you, honestly.
Is this the same non criminal disposition as supported by the courts?
Yes.
So this, this is a statewide citation system that uh, the court system recognizes, but the reason why Todd went up non criminal. For obvious reasons is, you know, see jail time because of it, but it does give us as officials the authority to drag someone to a hearing, the magistrate. If they don't comply, so this is a great mechanism to get people into compliance who are repeat offenders, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for, I think it's great, I'm all for.
I am too, I don't, I, it's not fair to Stacey, that she has to keep going out and talking to the same folks, and there's, there's nothing you can do about it.
Oh, I agree, I just didn't want to overstep our boundaries, and. I thought it, I thought that it would have to have been a bylaw.
Yes. It can be a regulation.
Alright, well then, we just have to read this to accept it, correct?
It has, you have to discuss it, it doesn't have to be posted. Or it has to be read three times, I know that.
Yeah, but we have to run it in the newspaper.
You have to run it in the newspaper.
Right, so at this point, what do we?
What's hearing?
At this point, are we just making a motion that we're gonna?
Well, we're talking about money. And uh. It's gonna cost money to run out of the newspaper.
It probably costs like five hundred dollars to run on the paper.
Alright, and uh. Other things that have happened, slightly probably been into being, that have just been read three times in front of the meeting. Doesn't necessarily go to the newspaper.
But reading it three times was for the fees that we're talking about changing, if you're gonna do a new regulation, we gotta have a public hearing, it's gotta be advertised.
This is different than the last thing.
So we now have to have a public hearing on it?
You get a lot of public input and comment on it before you can implement it, and then you're gonna send it to the Attorney General to make sure they're okay with it.
And yeah, I'm.
If we're gonna do that, we might want to look at other regulatory things that we may want to implement or may want to take away.
Right.
So we might, you get the most bang for your buck that way, especially if you're gonna do restructuring. How urgent is this?
This one more urgent than the other ones, but the other ones, we should have ready the next ag meeting. So we have all of ours, which would include horses, dairy. Sheep and goats.
So when's the next meeting?
We have the fourth. Tuesday of every month. So, whenever that is.
So if I'm understanding correctly, at that meeting, you potentially could have more, we could then, and we could all do this at once, okay?
We could have all of the ones we wanted to.
Okay.
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight, yes.
I think that we should table it until we can get the soul structured properly. So it's just that we're gonna do it, then get the most bang for our buck.
Yeah, and so we have all of them, and then we can present them all at once.
Then here's a suggestion that I have.
Mm-hmm.
When the calls come in. From this neighbor. That the Board of Health or the health agent, whoever that may be, goes out there. And looks at it as a public health problem, because there's nothing I can do about it, but you as a board and as a public and a health agent can.
Right. Uh, this. You know, if your neighbor complains that chickens are on their deck. And it's contaminating the deck. And it is a health problem.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good start gap until we can get the.
Right.
Regulations set.
Yeah, I'm concerned about this being a priority, I mean, if there's an issue that it got brought to us, it needs to happen.
It does, but if you wanted.
Way that we can do it.
Give me a big bang for your buck. We'll have, um, almost possible, we'll have all the regulations on the twenty eighth that I can send to you, and you can have them. But then do whatever you need to do with the public care and everything, but you'll have all of them, so you don't have to do one now, one, five. So now, stuff like that, I understand that. But it's the board's decision, how are you gonna handle it from there, because I can't. As an amateur officer, enforce anything. If I don't have.
And the three times that this has to be read has to be three separate meetings.
Correct.
So, I mean, where, you're the twenty eighth for your next meeting.
Right, so.
And.
Right, so you.
Our next scheduled meeting will have April of everything, and then we'll just do the three at the same time. And we can handle it between now and our next meeting.
Mm-hmm, yep. Mm hmm, yep.
And I have seen in the past that if there's a regulation that needed to be implemented in terms of the essence, they throw in a special meeting in between. So that you got your three readings out of the way. It didn't take three months to get there.
Okay, good point.
Now, in the interim. If you go to a property and neighbors complaining, it shows you that chickens have been on their deck missing. You can call Elizabeth and we can send out a health agent to.
Well, they usually go to the board of health before they come to me.
Excuse me?
They usually go to the board of health be- before they come to me. Or selectmen because people know, because they've talked to me before, because this is our own problem in town, chickens. That there's not, nothing that I can do for them. I can go out and talk to the neighbor and be nice and tell them to be nice, but that's about it. So they don't call me anymore about chickens.
Right.
It usually goes right to the board of health and the selectmen's office.
Okay.
Any further discussion? No. Um, F, we're going to review Discuss Act on the rabies clinic. Who's going to speak on that?
I contacted Dr. Brusi and unfortunately he is not able to participate this year. He says he's short staffed, it's only him. Uh, running the practice right now. Um. He did say to call next year, maybe he'll be. You know, more able to help. Unfortunately. We can't use him. Because Barry said that she contacted the vet here in Dayton. And Dr. Jackson doesn't want to do a rabies clinic. So. There it is. Not thinking we'll have one in April, we usually do, um, send them to other towns, which we can. Want to open that. But I've already talked with Bristol Aggie. They have, as far as I know, hired a vet for their vet center. So we would in conjunction run a rabies clinic with Bristol Aggie. Twice a year, one in October or in fall and one in April. We're going to wait, even though the vet probably is one step now, too soon to get that done now. We're going to wait until October and plan it. And open it up to surrounding towns. This will help students get um. Comfortable with animals. They'll learn how to give vaccines. It will be a good thing for both places, for us and for them. Uh, so that is in the works and we won't have to worry about. That's in the area. Usually our. It's like is an hour. Most vets don't want to come out just for an hour. We do. That. We have twenty people, but that's twenty people that need it. So I don't want to not do it ever again.
Mm hmm.
But I think partnering with Bristol Aggie is going to be great for us for a lot of reasons. Um. Especially me as animal control, it will help with um cost to the town. So.
But isn't the responsibility of head on to make sure the rabies shot?
It is, but when you step into a veterinarian's office, veterinarian's office, it's seventy, sometimes eighty dollars for an exam. And then vaccines, another twenty to twenty five dollars, thirty dollars sometimes. And some people don't have that money. And and I know people are going to say, well, if you have a pet, you need to have that, you know, staying, they need that money. And I understand that. But there are some people out there. That have pets, that love them and would give them the last meal that they had. Need that extra help to come in and just get a twenty dollar rabies vaccine. And I think as a board, as a public health. Entity, you should support that and we should support that.
One hundred percent.
I'm really excited about with Bristol Aggie. I think that's really nice.
I think that's great.
Yeah, that is a good idea.
Um, any further discussion on that? No.
So this is something that's going to be planned for October.
We're looking at October.
All right, we'll move on to G, Review Discuss Act, um, vote to recommend to the selectman. Diane Heath to be appointed as tobacco inspector for the tobacco. On collaborative. I I feel like it's named before.
You have.
Okay.
So this is a tobacco collaborative about Paul River. Uh, it was Marilyn Edge for the longest time. And then it was some guy named Seth that was in there for like less than a year. Then Diane Heath took over. Uh, she had asked us to appoint. Uh, Solomon.
Oh.
As a tobacco inspector. Which apparently we did vote it, but it never actually got appointed by the selectmen. So we're asking you to sign that letter also. Um, that was voted back in December.
Yeah, I remember that one.
And apparently Mrs. Heath wants to be able to also be named as an agent so she can issue. These and fines and all the rest of the stuff. So she's asking for her name to be added.
Right.
So the board would need to vote to appoint her and then we sign the form and we kick it to the select.
So wouldn't we uh. Recommend, there'd be a recommendation for the select because we can't appoint her, right?
Right, that's what it it says. We're recommending it, her to the selectman. Can I get a motion for a recommendation?
Motion to recommend uh Diane Heath to the board of selectmen for appointing for the tobacco inspector, tobacco collaborator.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Each other item's not recently anticipated by the chair, forty eight hours in advance. Um, I just really quick one to add on to that, um. Welcoming Elizabeth and asking her at this time um how her onboarding is going. Um, if she needs anything from the board.
Um, two things I've had to purchase were just supplies. I've got a couple of boxes to put things away. Um. Since I've been here full time, it's been a lot, you know, easier than splitting myself two ways.
Mm hmm.
But I was able to catch up on all the um permits and, you know, get everything. Tightened up a little bit, still in progress. Um, but do you want to organize? We have quite a few files that need to be inputted and. Looking to start that project next, but.
The ones that you're talking about getting imported, are those four boxes?
Yeah. Which I've combined them into two, so it's not.
The bigger boxes?
Yeah, two bigger boxes. But it's a, it's just a spreadsheet that we have to keep track of all the projects that have taken place in town. Um, Todd said it was a state regulated.
No, I didn't. Jim did.
Oh. State.
So I have found the state regulation, but I've been told for the last twenty years since Title V was implemented, that it was a state requirement. And I can't find the statute. And I've not known of any town was reported to the state. The information in that database. So I think before we go and spend time and effort continuing to do that, I think that should be flushed out. So I'm going to work on that.
Mm hmm.
I agree. It it's going to take, how long do you think it would take you?
God.
That sounds like a long time.
Couple of weeks. There's got to be a few hundred files in there.
Yeah, a couple of weeks of doing nothing else except for that.
Figuring out what work was done, put it into the file.
But that database makes it really easy when a homeowner calls and says, how deep is my well? He's boom, five hundred feet done.
That that information they should have.
But no, that's why the database existed. So everything was in one place because the board of health currently has like seven different filing systems. So it was. That's why we've been trying to get it into one file system so we can go to one place to look at the information.
But how long has it been since it's been updated? Um, what was the last entry that you saw?
August.
It's been a while.
Two sixty, two thousand twenty two?
Yeah, that was like about August.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, you're talking, uh, that was the uh trash.
Right? Yeah, no, I think he's thinking about the trash one. I don't know what the last date was. I can get that information for you, but.
Yeah.
Today I was working on. Inventory.
Really did trash bags inventory.
Can the online permitting system may be able to facilitate a lot of what the database is doing already. So I think until that's all vetted out, I would recommend spending time putting anything. Because there may be, uh, it just may be time that's wasted. So.
Potentially double the work, right?
Right, and just, it's just inefficient. Um, so I know that I believe a director may be coming from the selectman in the future that is. It's that other town departments will be required to get on the online system. So it looks like we're going to have a path.
So uh Todd, why are the four boxes, nothing's been done since August?
So what was happening is the office was, uh, database is very cumbersome. So when you want to go into it, you don't want to do just one at a time. So you'd want to do a few at a time. But what was happening is we were getting so overwhelmed with other stuff. That it was not a priority to put in the database and we just put it there so we could do them in bulk.
Okay, now that Elizabeth is on board, why is it a priority now?
Did you say what is the priority?
So why is it a priority now?
I didn't say it was a priority.
Well, I believe that you were told Elizabeth that she needs to get it done.
No, I just told her that's what the boxes were. I said it's something that she's going to need to do, but it's not a priority. Which is why it waits, again, that's.
The only reason it would be a priority is if it's state required and they come looking for that information and we don't have it up to date.
Right.
That would be the issue.
Like Jim said, that we go follow the online permitting, that would probably blend in and ask, answer a lot of the questions.
I'll try to keep the quote updated on any progress I make. But I did do a cursory check.
Mm hmm.
Couldn't find any statute.
The only database I remember the state implementing is the pumping records that we have to have those.
Right, right. So just, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, when Title V was implemented in ninety six. The theory that the E P had was that if all the towns captured all this information, they would be able to see if Title V was actually working. Not working and what parts Title V were better than others. But I don't know. I've been in the Title V business for a very long time. I don't know any community that's ever reported the findings to D P. So it didn't go anywhere. Yet towns are still doing it because they were told they had to. So I'll just, I'll find out statistically what we have to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, was there any discussion on this?
Yeah, would I be able to just jump in here, madam's here, if it's okay?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, like one, uh, like one of the um things that are just really. Uh, like really apparent as part of this discussion is, um, so yeah, like especially. Uh, especially with Ms. Maria being new to the department. And we need to make sure that the processes, so the expectations in the, like in the understandings. That. Uh, that both employees of the health department have. So in terms of what the processes are, how they exist, why they exist, and also frankly. How they interact with and how they inter- and how they intersect with the building department. So like because we know it's all interrelated, so that that process and those expectations. So like a really. Uh, everyone is rowing in the same direction. And I do think so as part of this onboarding. Uh, that, uh, that maybe I don't want to speak for Jim, but if Jim is amenable, uh, and that maybe. Um, uh, he, his office together with, as a Todd, Elizabeth and I. So like Jack, so like actually have a meeting at Pat. So it's totally of this onboarding process to make sure, so any expectations in terms of. Such organizational management. I like processes, just where things go, like understood by everybody. So like Elizabeth. Is really able to jump off on a really like strong foot without. Oh, oh, like hypothetically, her. Uh, having one understanding, Todd having a different understanding and then. So like further challenges being created from there. I do think. Oh, you know, that especially based on what I just heard, if we could so actually set something up like that now. So we would really. Be able to build a stronger foundation as we continue to go forward. That's just my thought, but.
I think that would be great. Everyone's minimal to that.
No. Who's talking to me and with just you, Jim, Elizabeth and Todd? So.
I can probably even Nancy as well because I like, I think Nancy, just in terms of these processes would bring. Oh, like I don't want to, I don't want to speak for Jim's department, but I could see. That bring value as well.
All right, yes.
So where does that leave the board of health? As a board, we're not going to have anything to do with that, but.
No, not, not the case. If there's anything that I see that rises to the occasion where something needs to change, absolutely, it's going to be the decision input there.
Okay.
Yeah, this won't be done arbitrarily without the board's input.
This goes back to the original comment of there needs to be. Day to day or weekly.
Right.
Reviews of things and not brought to us once a month because by the time we hit once a month, we're so far behind. Right, I agree. And if there's any concerns or any, anythings, you know, we can be looped in on email or phone caller.
Uh, but we do have to determine. Whose job is, well. You know, is it Elizabeth's job to do that? Or is it Todd's job to do that?
Yeah, I think that's what Mike's trying to figure out. And then, and then through this process over the next several months, that'll, that'll all get flushed out.
And I think it's better to do with people that are here. Daily.
Mm hmm.
Yes, people that only meet monthly. So I, I think it's great. If there's any concerns or anything. You know, I just request that we be looped in, but I think it's great.
Thank you, Mike. Um, any other? So, um, old business, A, Review Discuss Act, Board of Health Office priorities.
Which kind of we've been talking about all night.
Yeah.
Moving on.
Is there anything else anyone would like to add to this?
Well. Um, maybe I'm looking like backwards, but I can notice on all the agendas. We have new business first and then old business. But when we relate it to somebody coming into the office with a set of plans, we don't take the new ones and put them first and deal with the old ones later. So wouldn't we normally want to deal with old business first and then deal with new business?
I don't really care as long as it gets dealt with. I mean, it's the same meeting. We sit here the whole time. I mean, it's, it's completely. If there's no reason that we have to have one before the other, I don't care if they get moved. Um, Jim?
Yes, the only thing I was going to say, um, I, I don't, I don't know why it goes that way either. I don't have an answer, but, but I was going to say, if, if we're talking about office priorities, we had an early discussion. About uh scheduling, running through the office manager. I think so that all the other departments are understanding of that requirement. I think a director should come from the health department, I'm sorry, the board of health. That's disseminated to all of the other departments, that this is what we expect and this is how we expect our office to run.
Right.
So that there's an understanding that this was something that you three voted on. Um, and expect other departments to use that process so that we can bring some, some order to the department.
How does that conflict with? What we talked about earlier about who's boss, who's not boss? The stars.
We're just trying to keep it a schedule.
Yeah, no, we voted on it earlier today.
Yeah.
And everything for Elizabeth. So.
Yeah.
Someone needs to draft something and just asking that their director comes from the board.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Um, so I can answer the new business, old business question. So. This comes from like the Planning Board of Conservation Commission where you have public hearings and they send out green cards, certified mails to a hundred of others. They would always put the new business first because they just got the notifications in the mail and there's always like a crowd for that. And as you get later in the night, you're into the old business and there's less people there. So that's usually why the new business is first because it's a set time that gets posted in a newspaper. And if you try and put it like for our meeting, what time would you invite somebody in for? Five thirty, six o'clock? You don't necessarily know.
They can come in at the beginning of the meeting.
No, I know, but that, that's, that's why they post it for six o'clock. If you get a hundred people in the room. The other thing that would normally happen is like, for example, Stacy was here, Mrs. Barry was here tonight. Take her first and get her out of the way. So you would take things out of order to get people out of the room that are here that are waiting, you know, especially if they're paid employees like. Mister Iger or whatever, and you want to get them out of here. So. Um, so that's part of it too. But that's why new business is usually at the top of the agenda.
Select and all. Uh, you move things around on your agenda. For example, when Tracy comes in.
The board has arrived, Robin's rules of order, to make a motion to take things out of order. So choose.
Right, so if we get somebody like.
The presentation with Mr. Smith and. He allow highway department to go. Ahead because Mr. Ferry is a paid employee.
Right. You can stay for the rest.
Thanks, Tom.
So.
Thank you.
Summarizing, you would prefer in the future that old business go before new business?
I honestly, I was just wondering for this question.
I mean, I don't know to this point, I don't know what we need to do with it. I think it'd just be business, but.
Yeah, generally we don't have a ton on old business. Um.
But if we have a public hearing, that would be a set time that we ran the newspaper for six o'clock or five o'clock or whatever it is, and that would be specifically put right on the agenda.
Right.
What's the most important to me is that I didn't know like Stacy was coming and I didn't know she was coming to speak on this. I guess I should have known on the animal containment. Um, but I generally like to then move, have that towards the top. Um, and when we just mentioned, I could have motioned that we moved that to the top. Um, and when we just mentioned I could have motioned that we moved that to the top or whatever, because I don't like when folks have to sit around and listen to us. Um, as enjoyable as we are, um, I'd rather have them get their business and be able to move on.
No, I agree with it.
Um, so where are we? I've lost count. So we're still under board, um, office priorities. Was there any further discussion?
No.
No? Okay, review, discuss act, health agent job description. Was there any further discussion on that? We kind of touched base on that in our, our A and B discussion.
I did have in the minutes I was doing, um, January, that it was tabled because Todd had submitted some documents.
Mm-hmm.
Guys didn't get a chance to review them, so.
Oh, that was the M H A, M A H B list of all the by Board of Health priority. That's what I gave you all, yeah. So you were waiting for the restructuring to be done before we did the job description.
So it sounds like we're tabling this until we complete.
I'll make loads of table.
Um, any discussion? Oh, alright, you guys are getting fast. Um, we're gonna go to inspector reports. I'll look on first. Um, so I'm gonna step down as the chair and step up this in person. So I don't have a whole lot to report. Um, the Public Health Excellence Grant. So we did post for a service coordinator, um, and that period had ended. Um, it had a deadline. And we ended up having one applicant, but then right after it closed, somebody else showed interest. So we all voted, we reopened it. Um, now we have two applicants and it's gonna close on March seventeenth. Um. And then we'll have two and then we'll go through the process of how we're going to, um, interview this person. Um, if someone's gonna pick someone from every town or whatever this is, um, I'm not really sure what that process is gonna look like. I did attend this week. Um, they went over our capacity assessment data results. I don't really have anything to report on that because it was like one of those meetings that could have been an email and it didn't really, um, it didn't have a s- um, strong foundation of any information. Um, so we're just gonna keep on moving on until we get a service coordinator that maybe can better look at this data and give us a better direction on where to go. Um, there was two towns that didn't complete one of the first assessments, so they're gonna resubmit that, so that's gonna cause us to have to look at the data again. Um, so we're not really anywhere yet with that. I've, I'm hopeful that once we actually get somebody that can, um, take hold of this, that we can move on, that we can start seeing where we have deficits, where we can start hiring, um, people and get them out into the towns. Um, I don't know how soon that's gonna happen. So I've talked about a couple of times that healing's community study that I've been working on. Um, this is the opioid study through Boston Medical Center. Um, we had, I'm on the executive committee on that and we had voted on where we were gonna allot some of that money. Um, some of it's gonna be, we're gonna have two drop-in centers. Um, this is where people can go and they can get harm reduction medications. Um, they can go and get references to places where they can, um, seek other treatments as well.
You said, I want to be to throw up, harm reduction?
Harm reduction medications, so, um, Suboxone is one of them. It's medications that if you were to take an opioid, that it would either, you would have no effect or it would have like a diminished effect. Um, and they, they've taught me so much, um, I can't reiterate any of it because it's too much. But, um, on all the medications, I've been lucky that I was able to go and spend some time at one of their facilities. Um, it was really interesting. Um, so there'll be two drop-in centers. One's gonna be at a church in, it's either Berkeley or Free Town. It's Free Town. And then the other one's gonna be at Envision Farm, which is in Berkeley. Um, and that's, that's actually a really nice story. That woman that owns that farm, she lost her brother to, um, an opioid overdose and now she's able to open up this facility. Um, I think it's gonna be called Luke's Light, that was his name, um, and be able to help other people so that, um, this doesn't happen to other people. Um, the most that we've done so far is we do have, do have a Facebook page. Um, it's Healing Community Study, Berkeley, Dayton and Free Town. It doesn't have a lot going on yet, um, as towns have events and stuff like that. Each town will be able to put in their information to, um, let people know. Um, and it doesn't have to be just opioid stuff. It can be, um, one of the towns has a food bank. We'll let, um, that community know that the food bank is available. Um, stuff like that. Um.
So what will she be actually doing at her club?
So she'll have one of the anchor sites, which is Star out of Fall River, and they'll have a nurse practitioner be there on certain days and times. And she can prescribe those harm reduction medications that I was speaking about, as well as give them other resources.
Now, when you say prescribe it, where do they go to get it after the prescription?
The pharmacy.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I thought it was clinics that they went to.
Yes, they did. That's, the Star is one of those clinics. So COVID's kind of changed some of how, um, this has worked. Before you had to go to these clinics on X, Y and Z day and pick this up and it was all, it's a little different because of COVID. They couldn't go to these clinics and they're still kind of running things that way. Um.
Sounds good.
Yes, yeah, I, I think it's gonna do, I mean, it's only, so this study is only until December, I believe. But a lot of towns, and I don't know if Dayton's one of them, is getting, um, opioid money from the settlement. So for towns that are getting that, we can still use, we'll, we'll now have a way to use that money. We'll have an understanding of what to do with it, because a lot of towns are getting this money. They're like, I don't know what to do about opioids. Um, so we'll have some kind of framework to go off of, um, what we can do with that. One other thing that I wanted to touch on, just because I was in Maven, um, earlier today, is, um, it's that wonderful time of year, um, where I'm starting to see, um, Lyme uptick. I mean, ticks are always there. Um, but Dayton, I don't want to say it has a lot of Lyme, because I don't know how much is a reasonable amount of Lyme. Um, if we had an epi, they could do that kind of work for us, but I, I, I'm not, I don't know that. But I just, I know, starting to see Lyme, want people to keep in mind when they're going outside that there are ticks out there. Um, doesn't matter how cold, they're like in the tundra and they'll get you. Um, so just be mindful if you go out hiking to look for ticks. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
I'll step back up as chair and, um, the health agent.
I think this, uh, number one is this is part of our, uh, educational program for the textile recyclers. I handed these out to all the department heads at department meeting. Uh, magnets would require to do poorly motions and P R and all that kind of stuff. So basically, this is the new company we've got. The website is on the magnet for you to call and make an appointment for them to come to your house to pick it up. Programs in place and running. Um, it's starting to get some ground. We gotta get a lot more education materials out there and, um, just gotta get it. Out there, so we're working on it. I've also, I have signed up for two trainings. They're motivational interviewing trainings. You may know more probably. It's a client-centered, evidence-based, goal-oriented method for enhancing intrinsic motivation to change by exploring resolving ambivalence with the individual. Uh, it's, it's basically, uh, what are they called?
Escalating, yeah.
So, um, so I signed up for a couple of later this month. Um, we get this other email and you probably know more about, about the racial equity training. I don't know who we should giving this to. I don't know if you want to talk about it now or not, but, um, it seems like it should be something somebody should be taking.
I've already signed up for it. I don't know how many. So this is part of the Public Excellence Grant. Apparently, if we're in it, we have to take this racial equity training. Um, I did sign up for it. I did, I gotta look. I don't think everyone has to take it. I think as long as one person in the community, in, within our community, so.
Yeah, no, I just, I brought it up because it's a matter of if somebody needs to sign up for it and today would be the day.
Yeah, I'm signed up for it. I'll take it.
Um, I also want to mention that our transfer station attendant, John Lawrence, his last day was on Saturday, uh, last week. So, um, the D P W Highway Department is now covering the transfer station until we can get that posted and get that built.
And that, that's under Tom now, so.
Not till July first.
Why wasn't a memo sent out to the board so that we know?
But we, didn't we transfer funding for the remainder of the year?
Yeah, we had had that discussion. We were all down here and we were saying that it happened.
Oh, okay. Well, anyhow, I'm just letting you know he quit, he's gone now. That's what you want to know.
When did you know that he quit?
When did what?
They, when did you know that he quit?
Um.
February twenty eighth.
Mr. Hall?
He didn't officially quit until last night when we voted to accept his.
Yes, thank you.
It wasn't quitting, I guess. Um, last thing is, uh, so I'm trying not to overwhelm Elizabeth. There's so much that needs to be done, so we're trying to do like one thing at a time and, and get that under her before we move to the next one. One of the things that she's gotta get under her belt is gonna be the E D S. Um, the emergency dispensing site. Uh, we've signed up to get some assistance from the state, because they want to kind of.
We're on a list.
Yeah, so at some point they're gonna be saying, hey, we're willing, we're ready to come down and, and help you work on your plan. But she hasn't even seen me yet, so it's, I don't want to call it a priority, but, um, I'm gonna need a couple of days to go over all that, whether it's a lot of information. Take her to the middle school, show her how the whole place works, show her the signs and all that, so, um. But it's, again, it's not a priority until we know what they, the state's coming down. And then the last thing is I would like permission to drag her out to a perk test and to a septic system installation, so she can see what a perk test is and what a septic system looks like. So that when people call, she has a better idea of, you know, helping them guide them through it. I'm not saying be on a four-hour park and saying come out and just see what it looks like.
I don't see the relevance of that.
No.
I, my, my Nancy's haven't been out to see a house that's being built.
Right.
I, I don't, I don't.
She could probably see it on.
See when that's relevant.
Never held any image.
I also have an additional concern.
Mm-hmm.
She is a union employee. She has a job description.
Right.
If she goes out to a site and it's her, they'll workman's comp cover it, where she is going outside of her defined.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Except.
Which I thought it was.
You know, that's not in the job description.
Are you, are you dirty?
Joe, I wouldn't feel comfortable speaking to anybody on a perk test or any of those things, you know what I mean? If somebody had a question, even going to see a site, I still wouldn't be comfortable answering them. I wouldn't want to misinform anybody.
I, I, I personally think that what you need to know about it is the paperwork in the office, which you've already dealt with.
Okay. So can I take her to the middle school to show her the emergency dispensing site?
Jim, isn't, uh, I actually in charge of all that now?
No.
He's in charge of, uh, emergency response, emergency management, but the E D S is administered by the Board of Health. I'm just wondering if a simple phone call to the state can be made that we're gonna be structuring and reorganizing after we have new employees, new faces. Can we just move this down the road a little bit?
I did tell them that, um, and I don't think there's any rush of them getting here with lists of other communities. Um, and I know that Rehoboth was before us and they haven't even got to us. So I did tell them, I said, I just want to be on the list, but we are, and I told them, we just started a new office manager. This is no rush. I just need to tell you that we need this, um, yeah. Um, but there is, there is a new, um, and I was talking to Todd about it earlier and I forgot to look at the website. Whatever that website is that we do the trainings on for the, um, pu- Board of Health or Public Health or, I'll send you the link, but there is an E D S training now on there, um. So that might be helpful just to look at. I haven't taken it myself, so I can't speak on it. Um, but it is new and that might be, if you're looking for some background information, that's, um, that might be a place.
Well, that's all I got.
The only point that I was making about the person resigning, that, in, yes, officially it was last night. But on February twenty eighth, the letter came in and I guess everybody else knew except for the board.
I knew, but I, it was no longer, I, when I mentioned it, um, I was told that he's no longer.
Right.
He's not, that's not under us anymore.
Okay. I mean, uh, Patrick, do you, did you know anything about?
I have no idea.
I, I'm just saying, we're all trying to keep everybody in the loop on everything.
I know, but I think it wasn't kept in the loop, because we're, that's not our loop anymore.
Okay, great.
If I'm getting back to the E D S, um, there's a lot of new faces in the school. And by the way, I think we're doing a phenomenal job. I would check a lot of our stuff. Um, maybe we should revisit that a few weeks from now, maybe a month from now. Everybody can do E D S training. We can have a deeper discussion about it as, as an agenda item before we start doing any field trips or anything else.
Oh, yeah, no, there's no field trips.
Yeah, no, I just looked at, I, I have a lot of research to do on myself. I'm sure it falls into something that I'm a part of, but.
Alright, so, um, see building commissioner.
Something a lot.
I think, oh. Um, public input, is there any public input? Mr. Hall, how did I know?
For the record, Leonard Hall, Dayton Board of Selectmen. Samolin alluded to it earlier. We talked about E permits. And recent developments have come attention of the Board of Selectmen. And we've kind of established a priority that in regards to inspections, that all inspection departments must use E permitting. I believe the building commissioner's office was the first in the town to implement it. One of the things that we ask that the Board of Health do is to look into budgeting, funding, for the training and the purchase of the software for the implementation of, of this program. And lastly, I ask the Board of Health, establish timelines and deadlines for the completion of inspection requests. What is reasonable expectation when a developer or a contractor submits a request to the Board of Health, that there'll be a response by the Board of Health, rather than inspection? And whether it be inspections or a Title V.
And I think that could be better answered once we implement using verified services. Until that's implemented, we really can't.
Well, we still know we're doing these things now.
Right.
There should be some kind of idea of how long it generally takes us to do X, Y and Z.
Right.
Um, we just need to know what it is.
I'm just stating this not as a directive, but as a goal for the Board of Health.
Mm-hmm.
They would work on it over the coming months.
Yes.
Based on Mr. Mullins' timeline, I'm sure he'll work closely with you on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
On that note, did we, we talked about our budget for twenty twenty-four. We put money as a line item for the permitting software. Um, I think Jim had touched base on what roughly it would cost to onboard us, but I don't think we ever took into account the training for it. Uh, but you mentioned the cost for adding our department onto the system, correct?
User fees are, are established.
Right, we put that as a line item for twenty twenty-four, correct?
The, the, um, setting the department up is specifically, uh, related to the amount of permits that we will put on.
Oh, right, we needed to figure that out.
So I, we, we, um, I do have some correspondence from the, the health agent. I, I wanted to go over those correspondence with, uh, the office manager and then see if we can whittle down or change things. I don't want to go to them with anything unless we know this is what's going to lie. So, um, I would like to have had that already, but I think we just need another piece to get that all better out. Um, Administrator Mullin, would that be something that the Bo- uh, Board of Health will be required to carry in their budget? Or will the Board of Selectmen be doing that? The actual buy-in and, um, customization for the health department?
So I view that, um, as a one-time, uh, as, as really a one-time cost. And, uh, based on the, um, based on the build-out of Mr. Iger, um, uh, whether that would, uh, be a capital warrant article. Um, like it would really depend on the, um, so on the build-out based on the number of forms and applications, um, that will need to be built out, uh, through permit length.
Okay, yeah, that makes perfect sense to me. Thank you.
Any other cor- um, any other? Um, next is correspondence. Is there any correspondence?
I pretty much went over it, I think.
Um, next we'll approve the minutes.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. It was. I had, I had multiple ones. They didn't make multiple copies of this. This is from M D A R. It's spelled M program. About Delta A T H C, and they're looking for, um, both sale, local retail establishments, and they're looking for the board of health to, um, possibly do some regulations and jurisdiction.